It's January 12th and we're beginning the meeting at three o'clock as planned. Devin, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Chair Waspe, Alisa Marquez, City of Hayward.
President.
All Hodges, hard. Trustee Hodges?
Yeah.
I take it he'll be back as soon as he can.
So and Chair Waspe, East Bay Park.
Present. Thank you, Devin. And we also do a roll call of our prospective the HASP trustees, excuse me.
Yes. Rita Duncan, Oreloma Sanitary.
Present.
And Eric Henchy, Alameda County Mosquito Abatement.
Here.
Great. So we're all present. Devin, would you kind of tell us some of the staff members who are present?
Yes, we have from our technical advisory committee, we have Brian Lasko from HARD. We have Eric Pearson, City of Hayward. We have Erica Castillo of the Alameda County Abatement District. We have Taylor Richard, City of Hayward. We have Vishal Raim Real from Caltrans. And from the Park District, we have Eddie Willis, Ryan Holt, Amanda Sanders. And it looks like we have a couple of folks from the public as well.
Excellent. Well, welcome everybody and thanks for being here. Today's meeting is held pursuant to the Brown Act as amended by AB 361. Board members and staff may participate via phone or video conferencing or phone and video conferencing. And we all are doing that. This is all virtual today. So our first item is public comments. So Devin, could you let everybody know how the public can make comments and we'll welcome the public that does want to comment?
Yes, welcome to the members of the public. Typically, public comments are submitted in one of two ways. Either by sending an email to ASANDERS@EBParks by noon today or live via Zoom, where you could make a public comment through the virtual meeting platform. You can sit, since we're a small group, you can let us know if you'd like to speak on any items of the agenda, or if you'd like to make a general comment during this public comment section.
All right. Have we got any emails so far today?
I have not. Amanda, have you received anything?
No, there is not.
All right. Is there anyone here live that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, and I'm only looking at the screen I see. So if you're there, raise your hand or scream out. Hearing none. Let's go to the agenda. Our first item is the approval of minutes for the December 8, 2022 meeting. Does anybody have any comments?
I'm happy to move the minutes as drafted in our agenda packet.
All right, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 8. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, Devin, will you take the role, please?
Yes, trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Trustee Hodges.
Here.
And Chair Waspe.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Minutes pass unanimously. Our second item in business is election of the House but Chair for 2023. And does staff have a background on that? Or do we need a background on that? Or?
I'll just remind folks, and before I do, I wanted to note that Jimmy Deng, the manager, interim general manager from Oreloma Sanitary has joined us. Thank you, Jimmy. And I noticed this here Cannon from the City of Hayward as well. Welcome to both of you. So every year, the JPA agreement expects that a new chair or a chair will be appointed or voted on by the trustees. And so this is just a formal item to select the chair who will lead meetings for the next year, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion. My understanding is the host agency is also the chair of this JP. Wait, this agent, multi-agency meeting. And so that being said, I would like to make a motion to have Dennis Waspe continue as Chair of this JPA.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. On the floor, any public comments or any comments from anyone else? Hearing none, Devin, would you do a roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Trustee Hodges.
Hi.
And Chair Waspe.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it. We'll move to item number three, the City of Hayward project updates. Taylor, are you going to give that update today?
And there is nothing to report, no new projects.
Okay. Any members of the public? Have any comment on that? All right, great. Item number four is the HASP JPA renewal update. And Devin's going to give us an update.
Yeah, we'll make this a standing item on the agenda. I don't have any PowerPoint slides to share, but I did want to let everybody know that Park District staff, attorneys and myself have been working with Hanson Bridget, our outside attorneys, to draft the new JPA agreement that will have the five-member agency that will expect to go into effect starting on July 1st. For members of the public who haven't necessarily been following this, HASP has been organized for the last 50 years under a JPA, Joint Powers Authority Agreement that is being thoroughly revised to update with new members, to bring up to date with new laws, and to bring some best practices. So that's being drafted now. And I'll just share verbally with you the schedule for when folks are going to be able to see this and that the the board might be able to see this. First of all, our technical advisory committee will see a draft of most of the sections on February 1st. Then the technical advisory committee will review the final document in late March. In early April, staff will meet with the five agency attorneys to get them fully comfortable with the document, the draft. And then this board itself will see their first version of the draft at the April 13th meeting. And that'll be a time to deliberate, comment, hear public comments. Then the Board of Trustees will meet again on a special meeting on May 11th. And that's the approval date that we are predicting or proposing. And then if approved on the 11th, there'll be two months for each of the member agencies, the five agencies, that is East Bay Regional Park District, Hayward Park and Rec District, the City of Hayward, Alameda County Mosquito Abatement Control District, and Oreloma Sanitary District, for all of those member agencies to take their own actions at their own boards by June 30th to invoke the new JPA agreement. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that and see if there were any questions.
Any questions, comments on that, on the timeline?
Yes, I have my hand up. This is Rita Oreloma. I noticed that you go from February to March with the Technical Advisor Group. Then you go to the attorneys, you know, in April. When do the prospective or the two new trustees get to view the document after each changes or after each iteration of it?
I think our idea was that by sharing it with the TAC members, we're effectively sharing it with the prospective board members. We're the board members will see it officially at that April meeting. But informally, you'll be able to see it through your representatives on on the Technical Advisory Committee. So in your case, that would be Jimmy Deng.
Okay, I just, I would hate to find issues with it in April.
Mm hmm. Thank you.
From a board perspective.
Yes.
So as long as you know, Jimmy can share and, you know, which is not an issue. Just wanted to make sure that I had purview of it before, you know, April or really before the May, you know, voting. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you for that question. Very good to clarify.
Yeah, I guess if I could add, I would truly hope that even though, I mean, it's sort of, well, it's not a formality, but it is sort of, because the 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 potential members, as we call them, they're definitely going to be members. We've all agreed to this. It's just sort of a formality. We picked a date. I hope they can be part of the process and that is an avenue, but I would hope that we would, as a courtesy, send send all the all the documents and everything we're planning along the line to each of these prospective, our colleagues are or as we call them, our potential colleagues or coming colleagues in the future, or whatever you read in Eric what us to call them. But they're going to be part of the group pretty quick and they've been very active members so far. So I hope we keep them in the loop.
I don't mean to say that I think that there are going to be these vast changes, but you know, if my if the technical advisor for Oreloma, which is Jimmy, you know, shares it, you know, I know we will have conversations concerning it. So I'm okay, Devin, really. Thank you.
All right. If there are no further any comments from the public on the coming JPA. Hearing none, we'll talk. And then next item is the new Brown Act meeting requirements. And Devin's going to give us an update on that. This isn't an action item. This is just information.
Yes, this is just information. Thank you, Chair Waspe. As many of the elected officials here know, there have been changes in the Brown Act due to Governor Newsom's lifting of the COVID state of emergency, which changed the Brown Act to allow these sorts of virtual meetings where both the public and the board members were presenting or were able to participate virtually. So what's going to happen as of February 28th, so next month, meetings will have to be in person where the elected officials need to be in person. The public can either be in person or if staff arranges it, can be participating virtually. And that's our intention as staff for these HASP meetings. But what it means is we need to start a in-person meeting. And we have selected the shoreline, the HARDS Hayward Shoreline Interpretive Center as the best location, at least temporarily for the next few meetings. Because that's where the HASP board had been meeting in the past before the COVID days. And so the address, just so everyone knows, of the Hayward Shoreline Interpretive Center is 4901 Breakwater Avenue in Hayward. It's right at the foot of the Hayward San Mateo Bridge. So I can go into sort of the legal sides of this if you want, but basically HASP trustees will need to participate in person or have a reason not to that is allowed by law. And there are several sort of exceptions that are allowed. As I mentioned, staff intends to continue to hold these meetings, both what are called now hybrid meetings, so both in-person and virtual. So we're going to work on the technology to be able to do that from the Shoreline Center. So this informational item is really just to say that our next meeting on April 12th and the meeting on April 11th will be at the Shoreline Center. And following those meetings, if is so desired, we could find a different meeting location such as some of the ones that have been offered both by HARD and the Mosquito Abatement District that would still be in Hayward. They wouldn't necessarily be within the shoreline area, but close by and certainly accessible to the public. So I'll leave it at that if there's any questions.
And any questions, comments? I think it'll be great to get back out on the shoreline. Oh, Alyssa.
Thank you. Are we going to allow, I'm trying to think, I guess flexibility for members of the public to call in rather than have to be in person. I just think that's been one of the benefits of hybrid or this virtual component. It's making it easier for people to participate in democracies. I'm just wondering if we have that answered yet.
Yeah, that is definitely staff's intention. Thank you for that important comment. We want the public to participate in HASP. And if they can participate in person, that's great. But it's sort of up to us as staff to create the virtual platform like Zoom, like we have here at the Shoreline Center. There are some limitations at that particular facility, but we're going to try to work through them. So the public should be able to participate virtually. I can't confirm it 100% at this meeting, but that is our intention.
So I would encourage, I don't, I know if there's limitations, but technology, the setup of the space. As much as I want it to be there, maybe we do have to look at another location that already has that capability. I know the mosquito district does, the City of Hayward, and I'm sure hard facilities. So just something to think about. I don't, I would hate for us to spend money and do all this busy work if we have other options.
Thank you for that. Yes, I think we'll be able to solve the technical difficulties at the Shoreline Center.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll make sure. And Brian, I'm hope will probably beat me to it is is we'll make sure that the broadband is there and and working because I know it's been kind of closed for a while. I don't know what's not operational and stuff, but we'll make sure way before that meeting that we've got the capacity or we'll look into alternate means.
All right, Brian, do you have a comment? I mean, we have the ability to do that down there, don't we?
Yeah, I spoke with general manager. We certainly have the dates set aside. We certainly have a broadband. We know straight away. We have a broadband issue out there. But we're going to circle back and take a look at, see what we have alternate means to to support some sort of broadcasting from there.
And also know, if I may, that we are just, we, meaning Oreloma, is just building a new building and has kind of a great you know, training room and state of the art, you know, audio. So that's always an option. Just to throw that out. There are options.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I would tend to, pardon me, Devin, go ahead.
Oh, no, please, Chair Waspe.
Well, I was just going to say, I agree with Rita and I agree with Alyssa. There's no sense in spending a whole lot of money. We, you know, historically, I don't know who was around here in those days, but we tried, we used to meet, this group used to meet at one of our office spaces, which are all very nice, but they're all nowhere near the shoreline. And we said, hey, we're sitting here talking about the shoreline every day, kind of. Yeah, that shoreline out there, that place out there. And then we went to the Hayward Shoreline Interpretative Center, which you're right in the heart of the beast. It was beautiful. It was wonderful. You could look out the window and see what you were talking about. People felt better out there. The air is fresher and cleaner out there. It was really a great place to meet. But and Devin and I talked about this last week. What a great opportunity. I mean, I love going to Oreloma. I used to be in the business and I love going down there and they've made so many improvements down there. And it's a different view of the shoreline than, you know, it's 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 a couple of miles away from the interpretive center. It's a great opportunity. I'd love to see Eric's operation and see how they work in the mosquito abatement district. We have great opportunities. I mean, I think there's a number of buildings down there. I hope we can work it electronically or you know, make so it works. We definitely have to do that. I think that's probably going to be part of the law, too. We have to show up as elected members. But we have to also provide access for people to come to talk to us virtually or from their home. So that'll always be built in the cost. We can talk about it. We can figure it out. But I consider this nothing but an opportunity to visit other other agencies and see how they're working and see what they're doing on their end of the shoreline. So I think it'll be all good. If there are any public comments on this? Okay, so hearing none, that was just an informational item. Thanks for the information. We'll move to item six, the Hayward Shoreline Project Updates from the TAC. Anybody from the TAC? Have an update?
We know that Vishal from Caltrans does, and I've got one from Jackie to read to the group.
Great. Go ahead, somebody.
Okay.
Whoever wants to.
Vishal, would you like to start?
Sure, Devon, thank you. Hi, everyone. Vishal Remaral, I'm the Climate Change Planning Coordinator out at the Caltrans District Office in Oakland. Here to give just a quick update on the fiscal year 2023 24 Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. So we're very excited to share with you all that we released this year's grant application guide and call for applications today via an email sent through Caltrans and MTC List serves. So just to give the group some background, this year's grant program includes a one-time influx of $50 million in climate adaptation planning grants to support a local and regional identification of transportation-related climate vulnerabilities through the development of climate adaptation plans as well as project-level adaptation planning to identify adaptation projects and strategies for transportation infrastructure. We'll be holding a grant open house for prospective applicants on Monday, January 23rd from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. to provide prospective applicants with a chance to ask questions. We'll also be giving a grant program overview and a review the of resources that we have to assist with competitive application development. We also offer an early review of draft concepts and draft applications to give agencies feedback and guidance on which grant category your proposed planning grant might best fall into. I think I'll stop there, but I do have a more comprehensive email. I can perhaps send it to Devon to with more information on our upcoming grant open house. Thank you.
Great, Vishal, thank you very much. So did I understand that was a $50 million, your grant program, is that going to be distributed in one year or is that over a number of years?
So that's, yeah, that's the one-time influx distributed over two years.
Wow.
Yeah. And there are other funding opportunities within the grant program, but that's one of the more exciting ones I wanted to mention here.
That sounds like a great opportunity. Thanks for sharing that with us. I assume someone from the TAC or someone from Haskell will be at the January 23rd meeting to see if we qualify or if we can take advantage of this. Devin, is that a nod or?
Yes, definitely. Someone from the Technical Advisor Committee will be at that meeting.
Excellent. Please let us know what happens and I don't know what any board member like to go. Trustee, everybody's busy, but I think it's an open invitation, January 23rd. Where's that going to take place?
It's going to be on a online platform. We usually use WebEx. I can send the link perhaps to Devon. Yeah.
Oh, that'd be great. Devin, and if you could send it out to some of the trustees, I'd be interested in seeing what goes on there and what the opportunities we have. Any, thank you, Vishal. Any trustees, questions, comments?
Any.
Alyssa.
There, sorry, I couldn't find you on the gallery. I was looking around. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vishal, for being here. I think sometimes state agencies get a bad rap. So I really appreciate you being here and sharing this information with us. It's great to know that we can partner and hear from our state reps. So thank you.
Anyone from the public question, comment? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Vishal, for showing up today and sharing that with us.
Chair, actually, before we continue, Chair Waspe, I do have an update from the East Bay Discharges Authority. I wanted to make sure that no other Technical Advisory Committee members wanted to share anything. Just to make sure, doesn't look like it. Okay, let me share something written by Jackie Zipkin, the general manager of the East Bay Discharges Authority, known as EBDA, about the Cargill Salt Pipeline Project. So I'm just going to read two paragraphs here. EBDA is continuing to work with Cargill on a project to dispose of mixed sea salts, residuals from Cargill's salt-making process in Newark by blending them with EBDA's wastewater effluent and discharging to the bay by EBDA's deep-water outfall. Project involves construction of an approximately 16-mile pipeline from Newark to San Lorenzo. The proposed pipeline route follows city streets through Newark, Fremont, Union City, and Hayward, crosses the Sky West property, and then follows the rail, follows the railroad corridor behind the Oreloma Marsh before connecting to the EBDA system at the Oreloma Castro Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant Site. There's been a draft environmental impact report released for public comment starting on January 3rd. And a public meeting will be held via Zoom on January 24th at 6:00 p.m. The draft EIR and public meeting information can be found at EBDA's website, which is eBDA.org. The public comment period will conclude on February 17th. Later this spring, EBDA's commission will consider EIR certification as well as an operating agreement with Cargill. Cargill will also be seeking permits and franchise agreements with the cities that the pipeline crosses. Any questions can be addressed to Jackie Zipkin, EBDA General Manager at or by phone 510-278-5910. And that, I believe, is the update.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments about that? Hearing none. Now we can move to the old and new business. Anything going on, Devin?
Yes, I did want to share some details about the January 20th Hayward Shoreline Legislative Tour, which is being planned by the East Bay Regional Park District Government Affairs Team. And we have a meeting that will begin about 10 a.m. at the Park District Shoreline Offices. The public is invited, and if you are interested, please contact Amanda Sanders, A.S.A.N.D.E.R.S. at eBPRD.org, East Bay Park Regional Park District. And we can get you on the list. It's from 10 until noon. I don't know if I mentioned that. Basically, this is a tour that Chair Waspe, you had suggested several months ago legislative officials. Right now, we've got about 15 folks signed up from senators' offices, from local county offices, from members of the boards that make up HASP. I believe Chair Waspe, you'll be there. And it'll be a chance to see king tides as they affect the Hayward Shoreline and to talk about sea level rise and climate change as it's affecting the shoreline now and some of the plans we have to mitigate or protect against it, such as the Park District's Hayward Marsh Restoration Project. So it is scheduled for Friday, February, excuse me, Friday, January 20th, starting at 10 a.m.
Great. Anybody want to say anything about, because I've got a lot to say about it, but I'll ask my fellow trustees first. Here, hearing none, I please, I hope you invite all of your colleagues, your fellow elected members or your councils. Alyssa, especially, you know, I'd love to see Mark Salinas come down there. You've got two new council or a couple, three new council members or yeah, three. So it's it's such a great opportunity. If you haven't been to the Hayward Shoreline on those levees and the king tide, it's it's the perfect example. I mean, you can put up little marks on phone poles and say this is how high it's going to be. But this is how high water is going to be, a normal, normal tides in the bay in the future and sooner rather than later, probably the way things are going. And if we can get a storm out there, boy, it's seeing that water crashing across the levees and in fact inundating all the levees is is a real, real visual that I, it's great to see. It's great, in my opinion, to have regional people out there. If we can get some legislators, I don't know that the legislators themselves will come, but their aides will come and they're there. If you've met with legislative staff, they're all pretty sharp people that give good reports to their their bosses and we can get some stuff done out there. It's a very real thing that everybody can see and it's going to It's, it's a very real thing that everybody can see and it's going to happen. So. Hopefully, all of my colleagues, trustees, will invite their, their fellow board members and anybody else they know that's interested. I know this is going to be a tragedy for the Regional Park Districts and Amanda, well, not Amanda, but you know, we're going to have to get people out there. And I'm not sure how it's going to be done, but it's a beautiful hike. And you know, if it does rain, it's a beautiful place to be in the rain. It's, it's nature. It's real. It's, it's great. Just wear a raincoat, get wet, go home and take a shower and. Or get in your hot tub. It's, it's a great experience and I highly recommend it. Hope you can all be there.
What is that date again?
The twentieth, next Friday or Friday after tomorrow.
Next Friday. Yeah, I should clarify. Thanks, Chair Waspe. This will be a walking tour. And so, yes, definitely dress, but we'll be on paved paths for most of the time, if not dirt roads. So, yeah, dress appropriately and check the weather.
Pardon me for interrupting Devon. Hopefully, we're going to be underwater for a while. So wear your galoshes.
Okay.
Can I mention real quickly that it's going to be about a mile to a mile and a half? Just so you know that. To, to prepare for, and you should bring your own water bottles, snacks, that sort of thing.
Yes, thank you, Amanda, and sun protection, of course.
And just for Chair Waspe's knowledge, the, all of the council has been invited as well as the planning commission.
Excellent, great.
And so has my board and I plan on attending. They've been invited, but. I will be there. I will properly respond and send an email so my name can be on them, on the list.
It'll be a lot of fun. Hope you can all make it. Was that it, Devon?
I think there's a hand up.
Pardon me.
Just you, Marquez.
Sorry, Alyssa.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, I also sent the flyer to our newly-elected State Senator, Aisha Wahab. As well as our Assembly Member, Liz Ortega. So if they can't get, hopefully, what someone on their staff can make it. And I know mosquito district folks will also be attending.
Okay.
It does.
Anything else, Devon?
From the, Eric Pearson from the city of Hayward?
Yeah, hi. If I may make a quick announcement on another issue. This Saturday, one o'clock at the Hayward Library, there's going to be a discussion about sea level rise and climate change. I'll be a panelist at that event and, and I'll talk and be, I'll be talking about the Shoreline Master Plan. The event coincides with an art exhibit that's at the library right now about sea level rise. And the artist is Jennifer Coney, retired hard staff, and she was a member of the HASPA T A C. And she is organizing the event, so. And, yeah, we can forward on the, the link with the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, Jennifer is a, does, she's an artist and an environmentalist. And she does a great job of, of showing the, the effects of sea level rise through art and, and a number of great. Processes. She does a really good job. I've seen her, her, her show and it's, it's wonderful. I guess that's it then.
Yeah, that's right. For all the new business, that's correct. Yes.
All right, our next item is board member announcements or comments. Any comments from board members, trustees, I mean? I don't see any. Oh, Rita, pardon me. Rita, you're on mute if you had some comment.
Yeah, I'm just talking away. I'm sorry. I just really wanted to formally announce that we selected Jimmy Dayne. For our general manager for Orla Loma and. We're really excited and happy that he accepted. You know, the offer to work for us or to work for the district. So I just wanted to make sure that. The HASPA board know that he's legit. He's our general manager and we're very proud and excited. And he's been through the test with this mega storm that just happened and he did an outstanding job. And we're happy. So that's it.
Congratulations, Jimmy. No, any, no board member comments? Okay.
I'll concede to Amanda. If she can go first.
Okay, Alyssa, you go first.
Okay, I'm ready. So I just wanted to share with all of the members and members of the public. That we on Monday night appointed a new council member, Daniel Goldstein, to fill the last two years. Of our now mayor's former council seat, Mark Salinas. And also, we have a new Assistant City Manager and used to be our Finance Director, Dustin Clausen. Our former Assistant City Manager, Jennifer Ott, is now the City Manager with the City of Alameda. So we're happy she's still in the county and I'm excited to bring Dustin on board. So just wanted to share those updates.
All right. Thank you and congratulations to all those folks. Go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and let Amanda go before me.
Thank you so much, trustee Hodges. I was just going to point out that trustee Marquez had had her hand up. So please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you guys are all moving around and the little squares keep going around and I don't know if I'm seeing all of them. Okay, so I think we're there. Although, I, I just would like to say that, Paul, were you going to say something?
Yeah, yeah, actually, I, it's an ask to Rita if. Orla Loma wants to maybe bring some easel boards to educate people about your levy. On, I'm, I'm sorry, on the day we go have the field trip.
Fine, I, I should not answer that because I wouldn't be the one that would be educating. It would be Jimmy. But, you know, I don't know, Jimmy, what do you think?
I. We don't have any prepared now. I'm not sure if we can get something printed by the twentieth.
If, may I butt in, please? I'm going to relieve everybody of their pain. You, you know, I, I don't know if you've seen the East Bay Regional, I'm not bragging. Well, I am bragging. I don't know if you've seen the East Bay Regional Park District Legislative and Government Affairs Department. In order for us to jump through all of the hoops and accommodate these incredibly busy, busy people, legislators. And even their staffs are incredibly busy to get a piece of their time. I, I hope you all come to this because they do such a good job. We'll probably get an hour with these folks. I mean, you know, the, the tour lasts an hour and a half. Hopefully, they'll stay that long. Usually, they're busy, but it's bang, 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 bang. And, you know, it's, I guarantee you, our, our legislative and government affairs staff would love to have you there and want you to be there and want your input. But they have a program that's lined out and they're, I'm sure their, their card is filled. So Jimmy, I'd love to see that and Rita, I think it's a great idea to, to, to highlight the, the horizontal levy. But at this point, we're, we're, this is, this is in action. This is how our people work in the park. We're going to be there. We're going to have an ask and it's going to be about money. It's probably going to be about, you know, getting grants for our shorelines, talking about sea level rise, talking about the great master plan we have. And it's going to be really focused. So any additions probably would be probably at another meeting. Did, did that make sense?
Yeah.
It's fine with us because of the time.
I, I think you've, you've got a valuable lesson to teach everyone and a great example of what you guys are doing. And we'll talk about it for sure. It'll be mentioned, but I, I think Eric and his staff have a, have a real tight schedule. And then they've built the, the, the card, so to speak.
And we, we've educated Eric a lot on it. Would be any new news. I mean, what would be new news is the horizontal levy two point O. But, you know, we can, we can circle back with him on our own. But thank you, Paul, for inviting us. But I do understand, Dennis, you know, you want to focus, you want to educate them, you want to hit them. You want them to know specifically the support we need from them. And a lot of it is financial, so. I understand.
It'll probably be a sidebar conversation with them as we're walking along, I'm sure, and it would be an interesting one. So all of the trustees have had a chance. I, I would just say the only announcement I were, the comment I would have is that. The Regional Park District survived the storms. It's amazing. I've never seen so much water in my life. I haven't seen a lot of slides like I've seen in, in either in a while. If you get a chance, there's a, I won't say, and, yeah, it's incredible. I, I won't smile and say it's great and fun, but if you ever watch YouTube videos, I think we could qualify the Don Castro Pier at Don Castro Lake. Breaking loose. The, the sound effects of it cracking as it goes under the, the roadway and then taking a shot straight down that spillway is, is one for the, for the ages. And we had lots of stuff like that go on. You know, nature is really amazing and water, when it wants to go somewhere, there's no stopping it. But we're surviving and, and I had a lot of trees fall and a lot of trails wash out, but, but we'll be back. And when we've already started opening a lot of our parks and we had closed down for a few days. So. I'm going to. I'm going to ask, because we were really short, we haven't wasted too much time. We're not probably waste, that's the wrong word. We've got a lot of time left. Anybody from, Richard, I see you're here. Phil Gordon's here. Any comments? Go ahead and, hi, good to see you all.
Hi, this is Phil and Pat. You know Phil from first days of HASPA. And I'm calling for first for Aloney Audubon. We will be there on the twentieth and thank you, Amanda, for the invitation. And we're looking forward to it. Next question I have, and I did call in the hard office today. And I was telling, I guess it was, well, the office, I do everything on triage. Have a board meeting tonight and I wonder if there's any update on the Interpretive Center reopening. Does anybody know?
I don't. Does anybody?
Okay.
Volunteer a statement?
No, well, there, because of the rain, everything shut down. So I'm not sure when the opening is. And then they had the bird flu that was hit pretty hard, too. You're, you're talking about Sulphur Creek, correct?
No, I'm talking about the Interpretive Center.
That question came out up at our last. Meeting and. I believe Brian addressed it to the General Manager, so.
Yeah, and.
Nobody, there's no dates as to programming or anything.
Okay, yeah, because we're also interested in, you know. The Janice and Frank Delfino Wetland Restoration Room and other plans on that. Because I, I'm going to say we have money invested in that. My board asks me every month what's the status on that. So, yeah, as to Sulphur Creek, we live next door to the park and I know what you're talking about. The water got up to the banks of the creek, a couple of trees have gone over in our backyard or next-door neighbors. It was a little dicey here. I was very nervous on New Year's Eve. And then to see A Street washed out, that just added to it. Anyway, and thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks for asking. We're on it, right, Brian?
Very much. So I, I will, I will reiterate with the General Manager your questions.
Thank you. It comes up every month on my board meeting. I said, I'll call, I'll call, I'll call. And, and, you know, I, we understand COVID and the closure, but you know, it's time to get going again, huh? Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. I see no more hands, so we'll move to item. Number nine, which is the agenda for the next meeting. Does, do any trustees have any agenda items for? Next meeting? If you think of something. Call Devon or write to Devon or me and I'm sure the TAC will come up with something really good. Devon, do you guys have anything up your sleeve?
Yeah, April thirteenth meeting will be primarily about reviewing the draft JPA document. So we're fine for that. That will certainly take up everyone's attention, but if there are other items, we'll have a. We'll try to have an informational item or two to share knowledge, but mostly it'll be about the GPA agreement.
All right. Well, if there's nothing further. It is three forty-six and I will adjourn the meeting. And if I could. Ask your indulgence, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Carol Pereira. I hope you all know Carol. Carol, you know, it's crazy. I went on the website to prepare this. How soon they forget Sarah's up there. Sarah Hammond's up there on the website. Carol served on the hardboard for, fill in the blank. It was over forty years. I think it was either forty or forty-two. Paul, you know, or does anybody know it was a long, long time? One of the longest serving public servants in Alameda County for sure. Carol served is, is just a wonderful, wonderful person. I had the opportunity to serve with her for six years. Just loved parks, loved recreation, loved kids. Just. Was, was a great, great person and I, I, I was trying to find out if she was ever on HASPA in those forty years, although HASPA hasn't been around that long. I don't know if she was a member of HASPA, but I know she was a supporter. So if, if we could, I'd like to adjourn in honor of Carol Pereira.
All right, thank you.
There's no objection. I'll, I'll take some claps as, as acknowledgement of that. So anyway, thank you all very much. Thank you all for being here and we will meet again on April thirteenth. Take care.
And Dennis, could you give me the name of the person from the. Friends of San Lorenzo Creek?
There'd be Bruce King and. I think I, I've got his number. I'll give you his contact information. I, I, I actually reached out to our, our guy that's heading up our trail development. And he, he has his number and when I, when he gets it to me, I'm going to get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I need to become a friend. Thank you all. A good meeting.
Take care.
Sure, to the point.
Bye-bye.